I am calling to order the city council meeting for Sonoma this Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. And just want to let people know ahead of time that we will, during our public comment period, we allow 10 people for public comment and two minutes each. But if we have, I think we may have an interpreter here tonight, so we will double that time for anybody that needs interpretation. So, and then, so at this point, I would also like to ask everybody to turn off their phones. I just turned mine off, or your watches if they're particularly noisy, and ask everybody to stand as they are able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so, and I'm going to ask our Ms. Barr, our city clerk, to take the roll call.
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Gurney?
Here.
Vice Mayor Willander?
Here.
Councilmember Dean?
Here.
Mayor Farol Rivas?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and as there was no closed session this night, this evening, so I don't have a report on the closed session, and I will at this point ask for approval of the agenda, or if the council member has anything of the agenda they would like to pull or have particular comments on.
I'd like to move the agenda.
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we are at the moment for a public comment, and I will ask people to come to the podium if you have a public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda, and we only have one public hearing tonight, so items not on the agenda, hello.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Bonnie Joy Coslon, President, Moon Valley HOA. At the November 5th study session for the Mobile Home Parks Closure and Conversion Ordinance update, the Tri-Park Committee focused on five specific issues for your consideration. Tonight, I would like to focus on the importance of the working families of Moon Valley, many of whom are Spanish-speaking. Since the 1960s, the mention of manufactured housing communities in the city of Sonoma evoked the image of retired folk and 55-plus parks. Moon Valley was at that time a community of homeowners who were over 55, still working, retired, or uniquely living in homes that had been in their family for several generations. In 2009, the owners, for purposes of enhanced profitability, in the wake of the 2008 economic downturn, changed the use of Deans' Moon Valley Park from 55-plus to all age. Several very challenging years of transition took place. We still have seniors, 55 to near 100 years old, who wish to age in place. Today, there are also working families who own their own homes, raising future generations of Sonomans, and are part of this, our special community, Moon Valley. I would like to introduce you to this evening, two of our community members. Their remarks will be in Spanish and then followed by English. At this moment, I'd like to introduce mi vecina, Edith Cortez, my neighbor, Edith Cortez.
Thank you.
Gracias, Bonnie Joy. Buenas tardes, miembros del comité de la ciudad de Sonoma. Mi nombre es Edith. Estoy aquí hablando con ustedes en nombre de mi familia y muchos otros miembros de nuestra comunidad de habla hispana en el parque de Moon Valley. Asistimos a la sesión de estudio sobre la actualización de la ordenanza de cierre y conversión, y creemos que es importante que también nuestra voz sea escuchada. En el parque Moon Valley hemos encontrado un hogar, una casa que con mucho esfuerzo, trabajos y sacrificios hemos podido comprar. Como ustedes están enterados, los precios de vivienda en la ciudad de Sonoma y gran parte del condado de Sonoma son muy altos. Las opciones de vivienda para nuestra comunidad hispana son muy escasas. La ciudad de Sonoma es muy cálida, pacífica y segura para nuestra comunidad, lo que lo convierte en un lugar perfecto para criar a nuestros hijos. Por lo tanto, mis hijos, nuestro perro, mi esposo y yo, nos sentimos muy felices de haber encontrado una casa manufacturada aquí, donde hemos vivido durante más de seis años sin preocuparnos de que esta oportunidad deje de existir. Nuestros hijos y nuestro cachorro crecieron en Sonoma, en el parque de Moon Valley. Esta comunidad nos recibió con los brazos abiertos, y ahora nuestros vecinos anglos se han convertido en nuestra familia. Hemos creado una familia multicultural muy grande, hemos aprendido a respetar nuestras culturas mutuas, y nuestra esperanza es que esto continúe así. Aunque los propietarios del parque dicen que no hay planes de cerrar o convertir, estamos pidiendo que la oportunidad de seguir viviendo en el parque de casas manufacturadas en Moon Valley nunca se nos quite de las manos, y que la ciudad de Sonoma adopte todas las disposiciones recomendadas en la propuesta de los propietarios, que combinada con las contribuciones de la ciudad, nos brinde la mejor protección posible. Gracias.
On behalf of Edith, in her presentation in English, good afternoon, members of the Sonoma City Council. My name is Edith. I am here speaking with you, on behalf of my family, and many other members of our Spanish-speaking community in Moon Valley Park. We attended the study session on the update of the closing conversion ordinance, and we believe that it is important that our voice is also heard. In the Moon Valley Park, we have found a home, a house with a lot of effort, work, and sacrifices that we've been able to buy. As you already know, housing prices in the city of Sonoma and much of Sonoma County are very high. Housing options for a Hispanic community are very scarce. The city of Sonoma is very warm, peaceful, and safe for our community, which makes it the perfect place to raise our children. Therefore, my children, our dog, my husband and I feel very happy to have found a manufactured house here, where we have lived for more than six years without worrying about this opportunity ceasing to exist. Our children and our puppy grew up in Sonoma, in Moon Valley Park. This community welcomed us with open arms. Now our elderly Anglo neighbors have become our family. We've created a very large multicultural family, where we have learned and respected our mutual cultures, and our hope is that this will continue on. Although the park owners say there are no plans to close/convert, we are asking that the opportunity to continue living in Moon Valley Park never be taken out of our hands, and that the city of Sonoma adopt all the provisions recommended in the homeowner's proposal, which combined with the city's contributions, provide us with the best possible protection. Thank you. And now I'd like to present mi otro vecina, Karen, my other neighbor, Karen.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Karen Guadalupe Méndez Placencia, y es un honor estar aquí como representante de mi familia, quienes están presentes ahora y también estuvieron en la sesión de estudio. Durante más de una década, he tenido el privilegio de llamar Moon Valley mi hogar. Soy un producto de Sonoma Valley, nací y crecí aquí. Asistí a Flowery, Adele, Sonoma Valley High School, y ahora al Colegio Comunitario de Santa Rosa. También he trabajado en el Fairmont Sonoma por más de seis años, donde he compartido el amor por mi pueblo con visitantes de todas partes. Este es mi hogar, este es mi lugar seguro. Durante años he podido crecer dentro de esta comunidad y construir relaciones significativas con mis vecinos, muchos de los cuales también son mis colegas. Quiero que mi familia, mis amigos y mis vecinos sean reconocidos como una comunidad fuerte y solidaria. Hay muchos desafíos e inseguridades en este país, y no necesitamos el temor de que las ordenanzas no nos protejan. Estamos aquí para apoyar la actualización de la ordenanza actual para cumplir con los requisitos legales de AB 2782. Sin embargo, son requisitos mínimos, y creemos que la ordenanza actualizada debe incluir las partes adicionales que cubren las necesidades específicas de los propietarios de Sonoma, quienes también están profundamente invertidos en el parque, tanto financiariamente como personalmente. Gracias por su tiempo y por considerar nuestra solicitud. I'll follow this with the English translation. Good afternoon, my name is Karen Guadalupe Méndez Placencia, and I am honored to be here as a representative of my family, who are here now and were here at the study session. For over a decade, I have been privileged in calling Moon Valley my home. I am a product of Sonoma Valley, being born and raised here, attending Flowery, Adele, Sonoma Valley High School, and now the SRJC. I've also worked at Fairmont Sonoma for over six years, where I've shared the love of my town with visitors of all around. This is my home, this is my safe place. For years, I've been able to grow within this community and build meaningful relationships with my neighbors, many of whom are also my colleagues. I want my family, friends, and neighbors to be recognized as a strong, caring community. There are many challenges and insecurities in this country, and we do not need the fear that ordinances will not protect us. We are here to support the updating of the current ordinance to meet the legal requirements of AB 2782. They are, however, minimal, and we believe the updated ordinance should include the additional parts that cover the specific needs of Sonoma homeowners, who are also significantly invested in the park, financially as well as personally. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request.
Thank you, Karen.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is John Kyle, I'm a resident, or homeowner, of Pueblo Serena. I wanted to share a few thoughts about the mobile home ordinance that we're working on. Closure and conversion is such an antiseptic term. It's more accurate to think of it as bulldozing a neighborhood, leveling an entire community. I think we should rename it the Neighborhood Bulldozing Control Act. That might all help us all remember what we're really working on. The park owners state that they have no plans to close their parks, and we should draw out the revision process. That's a meaningless pledge. It's real estate. Ownership changes with a signature, and then all bets are off. Petaluma waited to update their ordinances, and two different private equity groups moved in. Let's take a look at their scorecard. Four arbitrations, three closure threats, one active application to close a park, two lawsuits, a counter suit, and one federal appeal. A recall effort has been launched to remove a council member, and a campaign has started for a ballot initiative to repeal or revise their ordinance. Our ordinance revision is preemptive. We see what's happening elsewhere, and we want to stop it before it happens here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ken Stokes, resident of Brazil Street. I'm a little hesitant to speak, but I want to express my sympathy with regard to the prior speakers, with regard to the issue you have to deal with there. A great empathy, and I think that's an important one for the city to wrestle with appropriately. I also am a bit hesitant to be here tonight before item number six, which I think there's probably a number of enthusiastic supporters in the crowd for, so I will be brief. I've been here, it'll go be a year actually, begin next month, that myself and my neighbors from the Sebastianni Winy area have been speaking and coming forth with recommendations and concerns with regard to the revised planning, the revised, the update to the general plan that is still in process and probably will be for another year or so. I simply wanted to say that our absence the last couple of months or our reduced numbers does not reflect a reduction in our concerns. We're simply waiting for something we can sink our teeth into and react more specifically on, although we have given a number of recommendations throughout the year. I only have one request tonight. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your, your time and your effort. In two minutes, we don't always have the time to say that, but I appreciate the, the effort of the, of the public servants that I stand before tonight, and my only request is that you and everyone here have a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Oh, thank you very much.
My name is Loretta Carr. I am here to express that I am strongly opposed to the proposed roundabout at Third Street West and Perkins Street intersection. The traffic committee of the city did not contact residents or businesses in that area for input ahead of their decision. I find that this shows no regard for citizens they are supposed to serve. I spoke to the three residents and one business at that intersection. None of them knew about the proposed roundabout, and none of them wanted. I have lived on that corner at 705 Third Street West for over 30 years, and I'm very familiar with the traffic conditions there. Patients, many elderly, park on the street to go to medical offices. The transit buses go up and down Third Street West multiple times a day. Large trucks from UPS, US Postal Service, FedEx, Amazon, Shred It, Marketplace Shopping Center, as well as regular car and truck traffic pass. If a barrier is placed in the middle of the intersection, there will be traffic accidents and possible injury to people or property. Those large trucks are not going away, and they won't fit on the street with a cement circle in the middle of the intersection. Elderly drivers may not be able to navigate the street barrier. Many other elderly or disabled walk or ride on their electric wheelchairs on Third West and Perkins. This roundabout will create a dangerous impediment to pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular traffic. On the second page of the traffic committee's plan, it states that the Third Street West alterations are so that bicyclists can avoid the traffic on Broadway. This, after the removal of one-vehicle traffic lane in each direction for the non-existent bicyclists, have created daily backup on Broadway. Now we're faced with this unnecessary restyling in a residential neighborhood. I am not opposed to painted bicycle lanes and/or appropriately placed speed bumps on Third Street West, but the roundabout or traffic calming circle or street barrier...
Excuse me, thank you, I have to ask you to finish up.
I'm almost finished.
Okay.
Or street barrier will not improve traffic, it will make it worse. Finally, I object to over $1,800,000 being spent on this project, with $277,000 coming from the city when there are so many other needs.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Please stop the construction of this unsuitable and dangerous traffic barrier. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, I'm going to wait till everybody that is standing up, make sure they're not coming in this direction. All right, thank you very much. So, moving on, I'm going to move on to meeting dedications. Does anybody have a dedication this evening?
Mayor, I have the one. Mayor, I would like to dedicate today's city council meeting to a long time resident, his name is Adalbert Denard. He has, he was here and also for many, many years. He was a good resident and caring the neighbors, friends, and the community. Best wishes, rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we got a lot of action happening tonight, this is fun. All right, so now I would like council members' reports and comments. Do we have reports from council? I will start with Councilwoman Sandra Lowe.
I just, I just have a quick report, and that is that I was asked to speak at the Cogier Assisted Living Facility the other week, and I meant, I bring it up because apparently it was a big hit, and they want some of you guys to show up too. So, let me know, but it was just really nice, I sat with the residents for about 45 minutes, and they had a lot of questions about, just like, who's on the city council? I told them all about who you guys were, and, you know, the areas you represented, your backgrounds, and anyway, it was, it was a lovely time, and, and, you know, the folks there were very happy to have someone from the council come speak to them. So, anyway, I'm putting it out there, so text me and I will connect you to them over there. And by the way, they offered me a stipend to come speak, which of course I refused, but I asked them to please donate it to FISH, and they are going to. So, think about it as a donation to FISH.
Thank you, you would be, I know that you're very funny when you speak, it'd be hard to follow up that, but we would do our best if we're asked, yes. Councilmember Gurney?
Did they reserve an apartment for you? Just checking.
I mean, you can, you can pay for it.
Okay, I attended the library advisory board meeting on the 13th, last Thursday, and really, one of the things I wanted to share publicly was the fact that the library board, this is an advisory board that is indirectly related to the library commission at the county level. We have a representative that represents us on the library commission, and so the advisory board does a lot of the, the work that would result in potentially items being carried forward on behalf of the Sonoma Valley to the commission. But they have some vacancies, and they've got two member vacancies, and so if you love the library, like everyone says, you might be interested in sitting on this board. And in addition to the two regular member positions, they have a position for a youth member, and so those positions are vacant, and if you're interested, see Sabine, the branch manager, and hopefully we can fill these positions with people who have an interest in, in the library. It is a lovely, lovely program and facility, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the explanation, it always helps for us to understand the role of these commissions. Yes, Councilmember Dean?
Thank you, Mayor, madam. I would like to represent, and all on the fellow city councils, on the last Friday, we participated on the local Redwood Empire and the Ford Bank Drive and fundraising event. I'm so applaud, being as a Sonoma resident, and I can see people's passion and compassion, and a lot of the food, donations in check, in cash, and some of the business owners contribute to a significant amount, and the food, and some of them very high quality, and quality in the cheese, and tuna, and cans, that is really, really a good food for people in need, for their lunch and for their dinner. Again, thank you so much, thank you for your support. We witness this piece of the history, and also we, working together, make another piece of the history. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willander?
Thank you. I have, believe it or not, seven items, but I will talk very quickly on it. The first one was on Thursday, the 6th of November, there was the Art Walk. Again, this is something that has come up, where the first Thursday, a number of the artist studios throughout town are opening up their doors and having kind of informal receptions, but an opportunity to visit with the artists as well as to see their, their products on the wall. On Thursday, the evening, the same evening, the mayor and I had the privilege of attending the Youth of the Year Award at the Boys and Girls Club, and it was well-attended and very significant. And I'm proud to announce, which you may have already read in the paper, but the winner was a young woman by the name of Andrea Ayala Hernandez. And the other thing that I was reminded of is that the Boys and Girls Club facility is pretty amazing, and it came about, again, with the volunteer, both in kind and financially, from a lot of people throughout Sonoma and the valley, and I certainly was proud to sit and look around at the facility that we have provided for our youth in the community. Very, very pleased with that. On Friday, the 7th, I had the North Bay Watershed Meeting, and they had a speaker that talked about the virtues and the cuteness of the river otter. I did not disagree, but I didn't get overwhelmed either. But, they were saying that the river otters are indicators of water quality and ecosystem health, so I think that's good. Saturday, we had another incredible event that was experienced by 15 people, and that was the cleanup or the workday at the Mountain Cemetery, as well as the Veteran Cemetery. And here again, we have this incredible asset that reflects tremendous history, and I believe there's been some discussion about creating a Friends of the Cemetery group that will be able to participate more than just once or twice a year on a cleanup of raking leaves, and so I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing that become a reality in '26. Then, of course, last Tuesday on Veterans Day, there was a celebration or a service at the Vets Building, and there was a Vietnam vet by the name of Gene Campanio that spoke, and I, we shared the time, or the time was shared with my fellow council people, both the mayor and with John and Jack, and it was a long but very moving talk about the impact of Vietnam War, as well as the impact of the war in the days and years after. So it was a very reflective time. On Wednesday, the 12th, the Unity Kitchen, which now is being managed by Sonoma Family Meals up near Flowery School, they had a reception, and once again, they were kind of celebrating the transition from Unity Kitchen to now the Sonoma Family Meal, which is an organization that's also in Petaluma, but again, very proud of that opportunity. And, I'm going to skip the seventh one, that's it.
Okay, I as well will try to go quickly, and thank you, Ron and Jack, for picking a, taking a couple off my list, so, appreciate that. So, on November 6th, I attended the Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting, and just, I mean, there's a lot that happened in the meeting, a lot of information, I'm not going to go over all of that now, I'm going to just give you a few of the highlights. Just one of them is that there's, they are entering into an $81 million project with Santa Rosa, so that, oh wait, 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 that's wrong. Okay, let's do this right. So there are, there's going to be $81.5 million, it's going to be, that they deferred from our 24-25 budget to our, and it's going to be moved to our rate stabilization fund, and so that allows, when Sonoma Clean Power actually does better on their budget, they can defer that money to their rate stabilization fund, and then that money is used to bring down ratepayers' costs. So that's very good news. At a time in the future when revenues could become in at less than they're expected, and often that happens because of PG&E pricing, so. Then, they are entering into a capital projects agreement with Santa Rosa Water, and the goal of that is to increase renewable power production, reduce biogas flaring, reduce energy costs for Santa Rosa Water, and to provide revenues to defer customer costs, and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so that is, they're doing a feasibility study, and this is really based on the biog- the Laguna wastewater treatment plan system there. All right, so moving on, we're going to move away from Sonoma Clean Power for now. There's a lot going on there around legislation and work they're doing legally with PG&E to provide better rates for ratepayers. to provide better rates for ratepayers. So, you can look into that. Now, next, okay, the other ones, I attended on eleven fifteen, a gathering that was put on by Wake Up Sonoma, but in attendance were all of the organizations that are working on, were working on both immigration and also work to get food for people in regards to, at that point, was the day after, you know, we had heard that SNAP program was gonna go back into effect, but just was amazing, as well as Redwood Empire Food Bank, the number of organizations that were there that have done work and to bring food to people throughout our community. So, it was really great to see everybody there and to just be able to, they're all working to also be prepared for other future emergencies, so knowing that there are other future emergencies could be coming down the pike. And then we already, oh, I attended the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary for Sonoma's Freemasons Lodge Number Fourteen, attended their gala and read a proclamation to recognize their hundred and seventy-five years here in Sonoma and their contributions to our community. Then on the seventeenth, I attended the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, which is a commission between the City of Sonoma and the County of Sonoma to address land use issues that, that affect both the city and the county. And one of the things I would say, there was a presentation by Unity Policyholders and Unity Policies holders is an advocacy group that works with people that have both been affected by either flood or fire emergencies, but they also provide an enormous amount of information on how to be prepared. So it's something I think is important for people to look into, they have a lot of really good information there. And if you ever needed them, they seem to be great advocates for people. You may be aware of some of the work, they were born out of the two thousand seventeen fire, so. And then yesterday, I think it was yesterday, lots happened this week, is I attended along with our city manager, David Guin, and also our Associate Director Planner, or Associate Planner, and I'm gonna forget his name again, Jacob, but it's Jacob's last name. Done. Okay. And so we, and it's all due to his work, that we are part of a cohort of, of counties and cities, thirteen counties and cities in the Bay Area, that are part of charging SMART and working together to bring more EV charging to the Bay Area. And by the way, the Bay Area is up to, what was it, thirty-four percent of meeting our goals, to meet our goals for electrification by two thousand thirty and we're ahead of anybody else in the state, just, just so you know that. So they're a cohort and then in that cohort, there's a number of different organizations, I won't go into who's supporting it all right now, but they, there's, each city is looking at different measures they can take to move forward electrification. And then Sonoma was, they have both a silver and a gold certificate and we received the silver certificate, which is here. And so, part of that, I think, is because of our electrification, of having electric bus and then putting the charging site at our public worksite. And then I believe that that is it. So we can move on to our city manager to see if he has any updates for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as, for some, for some numbers, last Friday at the food drive, we collected thirteen hundred pounds of food and fifteen hundred dollars in donations, so thank you to the community for showing up last Friday. Another quick update, the minimum wage number for January, the increase has been announced, that went out today. It's, we went back to two point, it's a two-point-five percent increase based on CPI data back in August. As many know, the data we usually use in October was not produced by the government this year, so we stuck with a two-point-five percent. That brings, for large businesses, the minimum wage to eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents and for small businesses, seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents. A couple of updates on events coming up, we have the lighting of the plaza this Saturday from five to eight PM. The city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. And then we have a lighted tractor parade coming up on November twenty-ninth from six-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. And then finally, a quick update on Spain Street, if you're driving Spain Street, that construction project will be over here shortly. The paving was finished yesterday, they're raising the iron for the utility covers today and tomorrow, and then striping will happen in the next two weeks. So, you'll see some new striping out there soon. Thank you.
And now I will turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Rudeman.
No report this evening, thank you.
All right. So, and I realize everybody's really probably here for the building codes, but we have one more thing to do before we do that. And that is, that we are, you know, occasionally, we take it upon ourselves to recognize people in our community that have contributed to our community in many ways, whether it is through their business, through their philanthropy. But I think I am really excited tonight because I can remember in my early days when I lived in Sonoma here in the seventies and eighties, one of my favorite wines to drink was a Catturi wine and that was because it was an organic wine and even at that point, I was into organics. So, it's really a great honor tonight that we are celebrating Phil Catturi Day and making November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Phil Catturi Day and we are recognizing all your many contributions, the industry, you know, you helped start the, you didn't start the wine industry here, but the, but, but, but in the, you know, it was in the seventies really, after I think, you know, like the, the French tasting and all of that, that, you know, Sonoma really became known as a great area to come and taste wine and have great wine made and you contributed significantly to that. And I can't go over your long list of contributions you've made philanthropically, but it seems like you are touching almost every area of our community. So, what we're gonna ask you to do is, is if you would like to come up to the podium and say a few words and then we will present you with this lovely plaque.
Yeah. You know, thank you, one of the best things is to be acknowledged by your peers when, where you've grown up. It's been, you know, it's been a lot of fun and I, I hope to keep walking the vineyards and, and helping this community grow. And I don't want it to go too much because it's getting harder and harder to, to drive down the streets, but you know, we, we have, we are going to progress, but it's a real honor to be acknowledged. Thank you.
You're so wonderful, I think we should all, yeah. (Applause). (Laughter). 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 (Applause). a comment on items on the consent calendar. All right, seeing none. So, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve our today's consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now, we're going to be moving on to our public hearing, and I am going to open our public hearing, and we will be receiving a presentation from our Director of Community Development, Jennifer Gates.
All right, it's me. The only item. So, we'll keep it somewhat brief.
You're a one-person show tonight.
No.
Oh. Two. Oh, there we go.
I have backup. The building official wishes he could be here, but he had a shoulder surgery two weeks ago, so he can't drive. So, but otherwise, he would be here. I'm sure he's here in spirit, probably watching, so I'm going to try to do this justice. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director. The item before you tonight is an update to the city's building code. A new addition of the California Building Standards Code is available and adopted by the state every three years. It consists of 12 parts, from administrative and residential provisions to existing buildings, energy, plumbing, so it gives us all of our regulations. The staff report highlights some of the changes that were adopted by the state, including establishing a new wildland or urban interface code, which consolidates existing requirements that were found in multiple code sections and put it into one specific chapter, so easier to find. It does update some accessibility requirements for consistency with either state or federal requirements, new electric ready provisions, increased EV charging, infrastructure requirements for new developments, and other clarifications and reformatting. So, each jurisdiction in California must adopt the updated codes as published or with locally justified amendments. If not adopted locally, the state aversion will apply by default. Local amendments are allowed when addressing Sonoma-specific conditions, but the state is going to set those minimum requirements and then provide when we can add things or not. In June, the state passed AB 130 in response to the fires in Southern California, and this prohibited jurisdictions from adopting any new, more restrictive standards for residential construction unless specific exceptions could be identified. And these were really specific to home hardening, which home hardening is a specific reference to when wildfires occur. Therefore, staff is not proposing any new provisions that affect residential construction. All the amendments for residential construction were previously provided in the code, so our previous amendments. We have just put them back in, in this code, and made some reformatting and some other clarifications. So, all the amendments that are located within the proposed ordinance are outlined in Exhibit B, and identify those that were not included in the prior code with the word "new" in all caps. So, in the very far left side, when you see the word "new," that is something that did not exist in our prior code. So, there's not that many of those when you look through. The building official is recommending including a requirement for earthquake-actuated shut-off valves that automatically shut off gas in the event of an earthquake for any new construction or additions to non-residential buildings. So, again, we can't apply them to residential buildings, but this is something that the building official thought was important to add in this round. Provisions were also provided in the fire code and the wildland/urban interface code, and these are mostly just clarifications and administrative as identified. So, Exhibit B provides you what the new, or the amendment from the existing code is, and then kind of a description of what that is, and then the far-right columns provide you with, like, the justification. It has the number one, it was in the prior code. So, that just kind of helps you look across. There's also, again, requirements for justification for any amendments, and these were also contained in that exhibit. So, tonight, staff is introducing the proposed ordinance to you and recommending council discuss and ask any initial questions that you may have. The state-required process for adopting and amending a building code is different than most ordinances that we see. While public comments can be taken, a public hearing must be held at the subsequent meeting, at which time the ordinance would either be adopted or could be amended and reintroduced. So, that meeting will be on December 3, so we have noticed it for that meeting. So, this concludes staff's presentation. I and the Fire Marshal Trevor Smith are here to answer any of your questions.
Questions? Yeah, I was hoping that he would lead us off.
Thank you, I think.
Vice Mayor Willander.
Just for clarity, because this will lift quite a bit of fog out of my vision. So, in essence, what's happened is with the 2025 coming into play, and we are forced to adopt, and we have no choice, the amendments that you've done is basically you've taken out what was in the 2017 code in terms of what our custom or our amendments were there, and you just simply have now folded them up to include them now in the 2025? Is that...
So, yes, it was the 2022 code.
2022 code, okay.
Mm-hmm, that we had adopted, and so we have taken all of those and put them into this code, and then anything that was new is listed out and in brackets. As noted, there was one location in our plumbing code, and then one location in the wildland/urban interface, and that was just identified, that the city had adopted its own fire map. And then, in the fire code itself, there were some administrative and some clarifications in there, and again, brackets with the word "new" are brand-new, never been seen before.
And, I just lost it. Regarding the new ads, and having the latitude of being able to be influenced by Sonoma-specific, what were the influences that wanted us to add to it? I know that we had to make findings like climate or whatnot, but were we just feeling uncomfortable that the California code was not sufficient, or that we had some peculiar conditions that we needed to add more codes?
So, there are specific condition requirements in general for the amendments. So, in the findings section of the ordinance, you'll see that it talks to earthquakes that are specifically pertaining to here, other climates such as drought and flooding, and so you'll see some of the amendments are more specific to, all right, what do we do with the floodplain? There are also, when you look at the code itself that's provided by the state, there are sections in there where they say, all right, jurisdiction, input your information here. So, as an example, in the code, in the ordinance itself, you'll see a table, and in the table, it has some numbers that were identified, like, what's our snowfall? And so, what's that snow load, and things like that. So, those don't apply to us, so you'll see NA. So, we fill out that table as it's specific to us, and that's considered an amendment, because that's not what's provided if I go and look up the code book. So, some of those are like that, or just identifying, one of the comments was the word "city of Sonoma fire code," things like that, those are to be amendments.
And to the pleasure of my fellow council members, my last question, for now, is, I was reading through the Exhibit B quite a bit, and it oftentimes would reference approved, previously approved by city council. So, that suggests that there were amendments by previous councils that were approved, and they just get carried forward, 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 unless someone raises an exception? Is that... Because I didn't write, I guess I was, my memory was challenged, because there are a number of items that said "approved by city council," and I'm maybe losing it, but I just couldn't recall approving some of these things.
So, again, if you're talking about approved by city council in the sense that the finding that was being identified in Exhibit B on the far right was a number one, is that what you mean?
I just saw the wording that said "as approved previously by city council," and whatever the topic was, it had came up about 10 or 12 times, and I was just curious if these were historical approvals that have just been carried forward? That's my, I guess, okay, that's it.
So, previous approvals of these amendments? Yes.
All right, other questions? Councilmember Ding.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and do that first?
As an example, I think of what Vice Mayor is discussing. It says, this, okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking under the California Building Code, "Adopt Appendix 1 Patio Covers," and it says, "This appendix chapter has been, or has previously been adopted by the city council. This appendix chapter has previously been adopted by the city council," says it twice. Anyway, it's on page 1 of 18, at the very bottom. I think that is what the Vice Mayor was asking about.
Sorry, I'm looking. Page 1 of 18?
Correct, very bottom.
Yes. Sorry, I wrote it twice. I guess it was important.
I don't think that was an issue.
Yes, so the appendix chapter has previously been adopted by the city council. So, when we're talking about appendix, in this case, the appendices, that is me just making note that this was previously adopted, these specific appendices. So, the way the building code is, is that it says that the jurisdiction has to adopt what appendices they will like to be using. So, they offer a lot, and then we space specifically. So, we did not add any new appendices, these were all previously.
Councilmember Ding.
Yes. My question is, have you done any cost impact analysis for this kind of changes for the developer, for the architect, and also time and frame? Take it longer, or do you have this kind of idea?
So, when a city, if a jurisdiction does want to do what we call a reach code, we do have to do that kind of analysis on that impact. So, if we want to do a reach code in regards to, let's say we said, we want to electrify the city, no gas, we actually would have to do that kind of analysis, but for these types of amendments, we do not need to do that kind of analysis. Again, this would be something that they've, all of our contractors have been doing locally for a while now, in the sense of we haven't changed much. Now, as far as the state changes, I am not aware of a requirement on their end either. But again, this is part of the reason why that the state did AB 130, was to make sure, kind of, seems like they wanted to restrict jurisdictions from doing any reach codes in the near future. I would, what was it, how many years is AB 130? 2031, yeah, two cycles?
If any exemption for our, you know, historic building, or...
So, we did adopt. So, if you, in the very beginning of the code, it identifies all the codes, all the different, it's called parts or chapters, that we would be adopting, and one of them is the historic building code.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Do they ever take anything out of the code, or do they just add to it?
Add a reel?
So, you actually answered a couple of my questions just in your presentation, so thank you for that. I guess my question to you is somewhat anecdotal, but with the regulations as they grow and grow, you know, we talk about wanting more housing, and I have no idea what a developer or how they would respond to this kind of thing, or these new codes. But I guess, I'm just curious, and do we distribute this agenda item to the construction industry to let them know there are changes taking place in the city and help them be aware of that, to get their reaction?
Well, you do have a developer in the room, because he had an item on consent, so maybe he'll participate in public comment, but I, other than standard notification, no. All developers, contractors, they know this happens every three years, it's been this way for a long time, and it's when you, the state's going to do what the state's going to do, they have their own process for adoption and things like that, even if, when we adopt ours, even though we're not really making too many, I would say, edits, we still have to repeal the old, adopt a new, and still send it to the state. And so, we still have all the same processes. I would say they all follow that all the time, and if they have a concern, it's usually around going beyond what the state is going to require, and they know that the state builds up every three years. So, a long time ago, I can remember when solar was just, you just had to be solar-ready on a single-family home, and now we're, no, you're installing, and now you're going to do battery packs, so...
Okay. Well, I get it. Thank you.
So, I have one question, although I think that you did answer it, but one of the things came up for me recently when I was in a meeting of a presentation around insurance for fire and other emergencies, was that, and I was, so I was very happy to see that all of this, and reading all of this, of course, it's all reviewed ahead of time before we're looking at, reviewed by the fire department, but that the codes, it appears to me, and I just want some assurance of that, that the codes are aligned with kind of what are the best practices in regards to protecting homes in the case of fire. And do so, like, I was thinking of, like, setbacks. Do setbacks are, you know, as we're talking about, and other, when we're looking at land use and all of that, and, you know, I'm thinking of setbacks, are we making sure that we're doing it in a way that's going to also meet the requirements for protecting houses?
So, I will...
Are the best practices, yeah?
Yeah, so I'll let our Fire Marshal talk to the fire aspect. I would say, in the building code itself, we usually, in the zoning side, are not going to have as restrictive, and we're not going to have more, you know, anything that's less restrictive than the building code. That's going to set the standard. We're not going to go beyond that, so, and if we do, there's usually provisions within the building code that would allow for it in certain circumstances or with certain materials and things like that, but I'll let Trevor get to that.
I think your question was, if I understand it correctly, is it based on good science, these changes that are being made? Also, from the fire code standpoint this year, we're changing six items, it's administrative things. We are making fire alarm contractors put a sticker on the panel when they serviced it, but other than that, it's mostly name changes and administrative changes pointing to documents that already exist, our policy manual naming that, et cetera. Councilmember Gurney, your question was, do we ever remove things? I removed quite a bit of things. It's probably not the way you want it to be removed, I removed it because they added it. So, the code finally caught up to what the industry standard was, so we removed a lot. And then, we do make changes. For example, mid-triennial code cycle, year and a half ago, we actually raised the threshold for fire sprinkler, our fire sprinkler ordinance, so that we added more money to it, because we felt like people were putting in sprinklers when they didn't need to. So, we try to make changes that are proactive for the building community, and none of the changes we made this year are detrimental in any way or have a cost associated with them, other than the cost of a sticker. There is a cost associated with that. Did I answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, I think I'm, and I'm amazed because of how much there is, so, in looking through all the codes, so that, you know, as we're looking at what's the best practice, we're sure that our codes are actually using that best practice, once it goes from the codes then to zoning, right? So that, you know, and I was particularly thinking about, especially since we're trying to add more houses to the same amount of acreage, and how are we making sure that when we're doing that, that we're still having safe amount of setbacks to protect for, you know, fire from one property to the next?
The code addresses setbacks, ridgeline development, and a number of things in the very high fire hazard severity zone. It always has, it's now in the WUI code, but those regulations and rules were spread throughout other building standards, so nothing much has changed, other than the fact that, within the city limits, excuse me, I have a cough, so I'm trying not to cough. Within the city limits, in a very high fire hazard severity zone, some of those WUI code regulations now apply.
WUI codes, so, yeah.
Wildland/urban interface, so how you build buildings, where you build buildings, and the materials you build them out of to ensure that they're safe, as well as some vegetation management planning when they're being developed.
Great. Thank you very much. I don't, oh, and I think that that may have, just getting another question, yes. Vice Mayor Willander.
Couple, one is, as I was going through Exhibit B, there were times in which there was a change because we wanted to align ourselves with other jurisdictions within the county. And then, there were a couple of times in which we said, no, we want to be on our own. I'm curious, you know, again, continuity, thought process behind, when you align, is it just for simplicity, and then you discover something very particular for Sonoma, then requires you to, again, create our own?
Most of the times, so, as, in the fire code, which is the part that I amend and adjust with the assistance of the building official and the other members of the city staff, we do our best countywide to keep all of that stuff very similar. The reason we do that is because if you're a contractor working in the space in Petaluma or Santa Rosa or wherever, that you don't have all these differing regulations, and it's an arduous task for us to agree to what's important and what's not. Our task, or our look at it over the last couple of code cycles is, don't change it, just leave it the model code, the way the state adopted it, and we haven't made any significant changes because of that. Now, there are some times that the city's code is different, and it has to be, because the way we do our sprinkler ordinance, or the way we identify what building class is in the building code section, so our amendments look different, just because it's in a different chapter and a different place, but it's very similar.
Fair enough. I don't have any more specific questions regarding this topic, but I do want, at some point, I am very concerned, as I've met with you in your office and with the chief, and I'm going to continue to meet, as far as the implications of some of the new Cal Fire requirements and influences on residential development, and most importantly, is the existing development. And so, again, I would like to have the opportunity at some point in the near future to have a robust discussion, if nothing else, to be able to ask questions and get clarity and understanding as far as going forward, because we will be on the front line along with you, having to answer a lot of questions from a lot of our residents and our constituents. Why are we doing this? Doesn't make sense, and it's having a real negative impact, so...
Yeah, and Fire Department would be more than happy to engage in those conversations.
Yes, Councilmember Ding.
My question is related to Exhibit B and the page four. This is a new, an earthquake-actuated gas shut-off valves. My question is, because this is a new, and do you think it is possible for the city for, or the fire district, and, you know, some of the residents, the volunteer want to change it, or, and we can provide convenience, or financial support, or we can change, or make some compensation or something like that, because in this way, it's better for our local residents to understand the new code and easily, and to be compliant for the new code?
So, as far as this specific provision, it is only going to be affecting any new non-residential structures, and as well as those that are, have additions to them, or have modified that gas line itself to provide, you know, at that time when that gas line goes in or gets modified, that that's when that valve gets placed. I do not know the cost of that valve. Again, this is building official recommendation, but I can find out a little bit more information for the second hearing.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
And just so we're all clear, this is kind of presenting this tonight because it is complex for people to be able to look at and have time to read it and understand it better. And then we will have the second hearing where normally it would come back on the consent calendar and we would do all of that discussion now. So just, and, and that also, I think another good point is for people to realize as of December 23rd, if you apply, anybody applying, it would go with the 2022 code. And then after December.
23rd.
23rd or on the 24th or after.
Correct.
It would go into the 2025 building code.
That's correct. So the 2025 building code takes effect January 1st.
Yeah.
And then our amendments take effect if adopted on December 3rd or on January 3rd, so.
Yep. All right, okay. So at this point, I'm going to, we're done with our questions. Do we have any public comment on this item? We've missed you. Where have you been?
Forgive me for my absence, I guess. Tom Conlin, I live outside the city limits. I serve, as you know, on the city's Climate Action Commission. And, but I'm here tonight speaking just off my own experience and interest in this topic. Good questions from all of you of your staff tonight. And these are very timely things we're, we're considering. The wildfire and obviously climate issues both top of mind, very much so here in California, as is affordability. So I had just a couple of observations and this is not the, a formal public hearing and adoption time where this is an open conversation. So I hope you'll take these comments and, and think them through before your next, your next meeting. First of all, I think I noticed just a typo on page six that the date should say the effective date is January 1st, 2026, which is what Jennifer just said. But it's miswritten in that document. On the wildfire matter, I think I agree with the discussion here to date that nothing in here strikes me as being very controversial or excessive. But I did notice that there is a, on page nine, reference to fences made out of wood being up to seven feet high and fences of masonry, six feet high. Which made me think we need to be thinking about fences in close proximity to buildings in that zone zero. And so I don't know how much our county, trying to be compliant, you know, coordinated with the other jurisdictions, is taking this matter seriously. But we know that fences are a key problem in fire management. I'm going to, if I may, take another minute to summarize my comments?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
We don't have a lot of comments.
And then in section 42, where we start to talk about the energy efficiency tier one exemption. Just a little background on this. The city and the county have for many years now adopted Cal Green Tier One, but exempted all of the energy efficiency additional requirements of that tier, which effectively guts them in terms of their greenhouse gas impact. The city has had in our B1 Climate Action Strategy, adopt an all-electric reach code. And that's something you've agreed to since I think January of last year. And of course, the state did, in its wisdom, decide that codes are costly and have an impact on affordability for, for developers and cascading to home buyers and, and rental occupiers. I remind you that there is a requirement in the Energy Efficiency Code that all of those efficiency elements need to be proven to be cost-effective. And that's been already completed. Those studies are completed at the state level. And so I submit to you that since the state has eliminated, my understanding is they've eliminated the ability to go to pass a formal reach code. We could adopt what we thought we were adopting. Most politicians in county thought they were adopting when they adopted tier one, that they would, we could ask for those efficiency components to be brought back into the code for this update cycle. So I, I ask your staff and you all to chew on this a little bit. I did, just before, there are 28 communities by my count under the current code that have gone beyond the minimum energy efficiency requirements. This list is from the Energy Commission. None of the ones in Sonoma County are on this list, just by my reading.
Okay, I, I'm, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, my comments.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could send us the language that you are specifically interested in so that we can actually, you know, digest it. Thank you. Hello?
Hi, everyone. My name is Julian Mackey. I had the opportunity to moderate a conversation this week with the director of Turner Labs, UC Berkeley, with a UC Berkeley law professor and with a former MTC commissioner and BART board member. And when asked to cite a single thing that impacted housing affordability and our inability to scale green building methods, they all three cited city level building code. So I didn't think I'd be talking about building code for a second time this week, but here we are. And so I just want to support this council's, what I sense is maybe skepticism or interest in streamlining some of the custom building code that we might adopt at the city level in the interest of supporting housing affordability, developers who are building in our community, as well as those who might be using, I would say innovative, green building standards. Obviously, we all have an interest in maintaining the safety of the community. But as we add on these additional levels of requirements for our developers, we're making things more expensive. So I just want to ask the council to keep that in mind as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a balance. It is a balance, yes. All right. All right, moving on. Do we have anybody else that would like to make a comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. So at this point, I think what we need to do, and I think we've already done it, we need a reading of this. Or do I need to, I'm asking our attorney what we need to do at this point? Cause we're not actually voting on anything. We just need to do a reading.
Well, we're, what we would request is that you move to introduce the ordinance by reading the title of the ordinance. And set the public hearing for December.
For December 3rd. So do we have someone that would like to do that? Or I can, I can move, right? I can move.
You can.
Good night, thank you. Okay, so I, so I move that we introduce for discussion, consideration and possible action to introduce an ordinance repealing chapter 14.10 of the Sonoma Municipal Code and reenacting a new chapter 14.10, adopting new administrative provisions and adopting by reference parts one through 12 of the 2025 California Building Standards Code and local amendments. And that we will have a reschedule for a public hearing to be on December 3rd of 2025. Do I have a second? All right, so a public hearing. I would like to take a roll call vote for this, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Lowe? Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farrarivas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, so, and then moving on, I think that we're at item number 11. So I will adjourn this meeting. Here we are at seven, let's do the right time, 18.